Summer Bridge Program is a transitional program for our incoming freshmen. One of the goals in our academic action plan is freshman success. And what we know to be true is that the freshman year is very pivotal in the school career of a child. We all remember our first year. First day as a freshman, everything, your nerves are a rag, you're anxious, you don't know where to go, you're worried about how you fit in. So allowing them the chance to come in, meet there for other peers, and get an understanding of what's expected of them, they can walk the building, they understand the rules and regulations of school, and just be comfortable before they come into school.
I love how outgoing the teachers are with helping me, even though I didn't ask for it, but they just came over and, you know, helped me when I looked like I was struggling.
I mean, I find it beneficial that you get to meet the staff, see who you're gonna walk into every day. You get to see the classrooms, see the building, so you're not just walking in here blinded. And I think, and you get to have a little bit of fun before the school's year starts. And I think that's beneficial.
One of the things that the students will do is they will take a field trip and ride the RTA bus, because this may be their first experience doing that. And we really understand how difficult it is for students just to get to school. So once they get to school and they've gone through that, we need to make sure that the environment is set for them to learn, for them to be excited and motivated to learn. So we want to make sure that we have supports in place for students, students understand the expectations, they actually understand the requirements of high school, giving them early exposure and setting them up for success.
When I grow up, I wanna be a math teacher or a professor.
When I grow up, I want to be a chef.
I wanna be a fire and EMS worker.
When I grow up, I want to be an artist.
When I grow up, I wanna be an artist.
I want to be a doctor.
When I grow up, I wanna be an actress.
When I grow up, I want to be a scientist.
I wanna be a professional ballet dancer.
When I grow up, I wanna be a scientist that does chemistry.
When I grow up, I wanna be a scientist.
I wanna make the world a better place.
To help me achieve my dreams, I need my teachers to be able to help me to learn everything I need to learn and then continue to dance.
I look for a teacher that does a good job and makes things harder.
I like a teacher who listens and helps.
To me, a good teacher is kind, respectful.
I want a teacher that's kind, that listens, that pays attention.
Kindness, willing to help or like tutor them? Like, they would actually like help them, like tell them like, "You can't do this, you need to do this or that."
I love a teacher that could take their time with me instead of forcing it and rushing it.
Okay, I look forward to a teacher is, I have a perspective to be helpful, and teach me good, and be my friend.
I want a teacher who helps me understand things more and helps other students.
I would like my teachers to be patient, cuz I'm more of a hands-on.
I'm looking forward to a new school year to learn a lot of more, a lot more things, and become smarter.
I just wanna tell all teachers and thank them for all the support in making me wanna be an actor.
Thank you, teachers, everything you did for me to learn.
Thank you, teacher, for helping me.
I wanna thank my old teachers for taking me this far. It's been a long way.
Teachers, I am looking forward to see you next year.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for helping me with my class, and make sure I get things right and helping me get As and Bs.
Thank you for letting us learn every year, all the stuff that we need to go to the next grade.
Thank you, Ms. Simon, for helping me do all my art.
That, that keep you being good and doing your job and, and just keep on doing your job and you'll be good.
What time is it? Three, two, one, yeah! So Liddy Summer Camp Program is all about STEM-based projects and different modulators. So the kids are faced with different scientific challenges and different topics focusing on the engineering design program and the scientific method. Three, two, one. It's not like regular schools, so that's what makes it engaging. The challenges that the kids have throughout the different modules also make it engaging as well. But it's more so, I'm coming, learning throughout the summer, but I'm having fun throughout the summer as well.
I really liked that they let you use your creativity and they're kinda making you feel special. They let you kinda do your own thing, they give you instructions, but they let you mostly follow your own path.
I like that they give us challenges that I'm able to handle, and I really love designing things.
Mr. C presentation is good like always. I saw him at the Victoria Theater and his was good too, so he's just doing the same things. And I like his things, I like to see it every time they come here, it's good.
I like that it's fun, he learned a lot of stuff, like science math, reading, and like the science experiments that this did, it was really cool.
Here, others may think, oh, it's summertime, so learning stops. Learning never stops, so as they continue to come to the program, you know, it's just enriching them and inspiring them to wanna be adventurers and inspiring them to continue to work with others and collaborate with others. So I do think that this program should continue to be going. That's why this is my third year coming, cuz again, I'm having fun too with it. That's Stacy's number two, so I think she's training her.
I saw you come in, but then you was gone. You got all these lovely seats right here. You don't wanna sit in the front?
Mr. Lacy, how you doing? Everybody up? I'm up.
You know, the hour is 5:30.
I know, that's what I'm saying, let's get it going, everybody. You up, family? Yep. It's probably Leszta's or Charis's. This was set up here. Every time. When people walk in, I'm gonna be like, dum 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 dum. Yeah, she's like in a green entrance. Dum 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 dum. That's another comparison, shit bad for Europe. People's Court.
People's Court.
Somebody has to give a little background.
I won't do it next time.
Walking up, Lisa, I'm like. Good evening, I'd like to call this December 10th, 2024 review session to order. Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call, please?
President Smith?
Here.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Dr. Goodwin?
Here.
Dr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Lacy?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Reynard?
Present.
Seven present.
All right, let's get things going, let's get things going. I see 7:15 in my notes, trying to get up out of here, trying to get up out of here. Dr. Lawrence, take it away.
Absolutely, uh, let's jump right into administrative appointments. I recommend approval of the following administrative appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
Well, well, well. Any questions? It's been moved in second, seeing no questions, we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following DEA after July 10th for votes.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, do we have any questions? I see no questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
No.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Dr. Goodwin?
No.
Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
No.
Six no, one yes.
I recommend approval of the following certified appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following classified appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following classified exempt appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Abstain.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Six yeses, one abstain.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence.
Recommend approval of the following athletic supplemental appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second, do we have any questions? I see no questions, I do wanna shout out the team for getting a jump on a lot of these sports. Appreciate that, appreciate everybody working with our children in all roles. Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following supplemental appointments for a vote.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in doubly second. Pick your points now, now. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, but I also want to say I appreciate all those that pick up these supplemental duties and work with our children in these extra roles, especially with all the work they do during the school day as well. Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
And we're off, Dr. Lawrence.
I'd like the board to take a look at contracts for review only.
All right, contracts are for review, do we have any questions from the board currently? Seeing no questions, as always, feel free to reach out to get any questions you may have, and Dr. Lawrence, and Madam Treasurer, and our business manager, Dr. Jones, would like to make sure that we get those questions asked, answered in a timely fashion, appreciate that. Dr. Lawrence?
I would like to bring to the board a memorandum of understanding, DPS University of Cincinnati, for review only. That's cool around the corner.
Any questions? See no questions, Dr. Lawrence, could you just give us a brief, very brief overview of the MOU?
Absolutely, Associate Superintendent Minder, Chief Academic Officer Keisha Sheehy are engaged in multiple research studies at all times. So as, I'm gonna take a page out of Dr. Goodwin's book, how are you guys gonna measure it? So we're going to be looking at doing some measurement for 2 through 6 multilingual children, and how those classroom dynamics work.
Appreciate that.
Shout out to Dr. Lawrence for reading my book.
Right, I know.
Uh, yeah, I read it first and last.
Taking pages, huh?
I am.
All right, moving right along, Dr. Lawrence?
A memorandum of understa-- I recommend approval of a memorandum of understanding settlement agreement for O.C. Local 158, and this is for a vote, and I'd like to thank the business manager, Treasurer's Office, and also Local 158.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in second, any questions?
Bailey?
So is it?
Second.
What, what union is it?
Clerical.
Clerical.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following MOU, O.C. Local 101, SROs 26 pay, and thank you to the board for being patient with us as we got this together. Thanks for the Treasurer's Office and HR, and thanks for Local 101 for the feedback.
Second.
Then moved in second, I was always saying, wrap it up.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, we're moving right now. You want us to start talking? So I'll give a couple speeches if you like.
No, 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 no.
Any questions? No questions, I do want to say I appreciate the collaborative efforts, you know, that's what we asking for. See no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval, memorandum of understanding, DEA additional supplementals.
So move. Second.
It's been moved in second, do we have any questions?
I have one request.
Yes, please.
Can we also go back to the DA and revisit the track, the track coaches' supplementals? I believe in the last one, they were the only group that received a decrease. So they may be generous enough for us to look at it, and then Madam Treasurer on our side, at least getting them back to where they were with that with us financially, because they took the, they're the only group that took a decrease.
Absolutely, Ms. Gom, would you make a note of that, please, to have that conversation in my packet that you give me for how I, I'll top it on the board, President Mahoney at that time. And yes, we'll circle back, Dr. Goodwin.
Thank you, okay.
Bye, next meeting.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, Dr. Lawrence, will you conclude your recommendations for today?
It does not, it does not, I have 22 more. Amen. Yes, that concludes, that concludes my recommendations.
Hey, you keep playing with us if you want to. Let me show you, let me show you, give me a second.
That concludes my recommendations.
All right, Madam Treasurer?
Okay, all my recommendations are for review only, and I have certificate of estimated resources. And I, we are increasing it because we got grant funds for the carryover. So we increasing our certificate of estimated by that amount for the grant funds, all the 500 grants.
All right, any questions? See no questions, Madam Treasurer, your next recommendation?
My next one is appropriation. It's a little bit slow.
It may as well be reviewed in committee, so.
Yeah, okay. We, we are increasing grant funds by that appropriation, by the carryover funds we get.
Okay.
And another one is decreasing the appropriation for that 507, because we closed all that accounts. And we increasing general fund by $400,000 for carrier take, $600,000 for contract with Children's Hospital, and the other ones are small amounts.
On, on this one, so with the increase to Children's, I guess, trying to understand, what's the, what is this amount compared to the amount that's on the purchase order for us to review as well? Like, is this an additional amount on top of that amount?
Additional amount requested, okay, she's coming. The $600 for Children's.
Yeah, so there's a increase for, of $640,000. Yeah, so is the $640,000 increase, is that to then cover the $200,000 purchase order that's on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the $643.
Yeah.
So that's to pay outstanding invoices, because we don't get our IDEA funds right away, we have to waiver them to come in, so these are all outstanding bills that we have to pay.
So we, we owed them the $270,000, and then this $600 and something is just to cover later?
The $276 is for the student resiliency coordinators, and the $643 is for outstanding invoices.
Wait, wait. We owed them $643, or we owed them the $276?
That is, that's encumbered to pay for the student resilience coordinators for the rest of the year. So the $643 is the outstanding, cuz we've been waiting on the money to come in from ODE.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer?
Okay, the next one is advances for December, it's a small amount. We are advancing from general fund to 507, which is ARP homeless, $6,877.82. We're going to get reimbursed, we are going to reimburse general fund when we receive the money.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, your next recommendation?
Next one is monthly financial, this is a space holder until the Finance Committee meets on Thursday.
I don't think there's any questions for that.
Okay, next one is minutes, minutes for November 12, November 15, and November 19.
Seeing no questions, may continue, Madam Treasurer?
The next one is donations, thank you donors, we have three, we have four donations from Alpha Delta, $400, BSN Sports, for athletics, custom golf cart, worth $22,000. Home investments, that is for stable schools, practice uniforms, worth $926.20. Oh, Ms. Karen Wick. Thank you.
Well, we need to correct that, because the tickets for the kids are coming from the principal's fund, and I'm doing the treat, so that's not quite correct, but thank you for that recognition, so I appreciate that. But I'll reconcile that number with you.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna make sure, yeah, because Ms. Goyens and I have been working closely with, you know, the movie person, we're taking all the girls to see the triple 68, so it's gonna be fun, so.
Okay.
I'm excited about it, so.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, any questions? None, I always wanna be thankful of that, we'll make sure we repeat that next week when we vote. Madam Treasurer?
Okay, next one is purchase requisitions, these are from different departments. Let's look at them, and if you have any question, we will answer.
All right, give a moment for people to look over purchase requisitions if they have any questions.
Got one.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I just wanna say thank you, Dr. Lawrence and Associate Superintendent Lisa Minor. I see the school being uniforms on here, which is really big, this has been an ongoing thing, and I know you guys had to move some things around to make that possible. So thank you, I was gonna thank you for something else, but I don't see it on here, let me look, under $15,000?
I don't either, let me see if.
Well, I'm gonna pre-thank you, because I know that you guys are also going to have a debate, kids out here in something snazzy, so. the debate kids out here in something snazzy. So thank you in advance for when that comes.
The PR insists, please.
It's under fifteen.
Yes, under fifteen.
Is it on there?
I did have a question on that, though.
For the ba- no, for the debate jacket?
Yes.
So thank you, guys, for looking out. Thank you, Ms. Sheehy, for your team, and making that, like, really taking into that, that program. Yeah, I'm excited.
We also got you all debate jackets as well.
No, they don't get them. They didn't do any work whatsoever. They gotta show up.
They gotta show up.
We got a couple teams that can use a coat, so if any of y'all want to come out and help, come on.
You go against you? Would you like to coach a debate team, sir?
I'll take that challenge.
You hear that, Ms. Sheehy? Seven debate jackets for the board members. Battle of the board members.
Got a lot of people that like to bicker around. Any, any other questions on purchase requisitions?
No, just, um, thanks to the team. I know Ms. McIntosh and then the band directors for the band uniform piece. It is good to see international on this list as well, um, with the other schools. I think, uh, hopefully at some point, um, I am confident that every high school band program will get to the numbers similar to Belmont, so we may have to purchase more later, um, for the other schools. Um, and my last one was on... I will save that one for Dr. Jones.
Yeah. Any other questions on purchase requisitions? Seeing none, moving right along, Madam Treasurer?
Next one is Zenin Now. We have three items, Zenin Now, and let's look at them, and if you have any question, we'll answer.
One question. Dr. Lawrence?
Mm-hmm.
Can you get back to me just how much longer our contract is with civil service testing?
Not only can I get back with you, I'd be happy to do that. When we went over this and at the board review session, uh, I think the number went from, when I was here ten years ago, a hundred, then a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five. Now it's almost a hundred and fifty, just keeps, just keeps skyrocketing. And, um, we, we brought it up, so I will be happy to get back with you.
Tell you that was coming.
Is it, is it the union that has the civil service exam as a requirement, or the board?
It's the city, in, in collaboration with you.
Any other questions on Zenin Now? Seeing no further questions, Madam Treasurer, that concludes your recommendation.
Yes.
Ah, thank you, Madam Treasurer. I appreciate you.
Mr. President, can I do a motion to reconsider before we move on to the business manager?
Yes, ma'am.
On, under superintendent's personnel agenda, item B, just a motion to reconsider, and then I ask the board members to please go read the notes on there before you vote again. So, if I can get a second.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second.
So item B?
Item B.
B.
B human re- DEA after July tenth for the vote.
Okay.
And this is a motion to reconsider to vote on it again.
Right.
Yes.
Any questions on the initial motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right. That's a good one.
Like to make a motion for us to approve the superintendent's recommendation under item B.
Oh, second it. It's been moved in second. Any questions?
It's the first time I've been right on something. I just want to point that out. Just saying.
It's if it's December to be right about something. I couldn't do it.
Honestly, we just changed our minds. You ain't right. Might go a different way. Let's see how it goes.
I just want y'all to know that all the things he told y'all all year was wrong there. Seeing no further questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right. Well, back to our regularly scheduled program, moving down to business managers' recommendations. Do we have anybody in place of Dr. Jones today?
Ms. Hollis, would you like to come up or to speak to this recommendation on behalf of your boss?
He's like, what you doing?
That's all right.
I didn't bring my computer up here.
It's right there. You need it.
Dr. Jones not hearing all these people here. Everybody in here today.
Lot of everybody.
Anderson, Kahuun, you know. You got to be big time.
Not everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm making a recommendation approval of associate business manager.
So moved.
You moved? Do we have a second?
Is this for a vote?
Oh, it says, it doesn't say it's up for vote. That's right.
It's not for a vote.
Did you do, 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 do? I know that.
I talked to him, and he wanted to be for a vote.
Yeah, I must say, he's out. I believe he did want it to be for a vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this is just a scale piece of it, so.
Salary scan.
Okay. So it's on the floor, was moved in second. Do we have any questions?
Walker, you move this one?
I did.
Yes.
And second.
I second.
Come on, you supposed to give her, you supposed to give her at least something.
Mm-mm. Y'all, y'all can't be putting her out there like this.
Oh, man.
She giving us all the facial expressions, like, come on.
Appreciate it.
Trouble colors and everything. Oh, we got a problem. All right. It's been moved in second. Seeing no questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, Ms. Hollis. Appreciate you coming in. You supposed to say I need to express ratification. Moving along. I see we had board members expen- is that supposed to be on there, Ms. Kea, because I don't see anything hundred?
Yes, but it was the purpose that. This was the winter, um, school finance workshop.
Okay. I will, um, ask for a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved in second. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Okay. Moving along. I recommend the approval of the following contract for internal auditor.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, I will say, want to thank, uh, the board members that worked with our firm going through the process, uh, which was done very well. I appreciate the process that we went through. I look forward to this person joining the district. May we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, now we'll kick it over to Dr. Goodwin. All right. Man, we got like three more minutes, and we up out of here.
Yeah. I mean, it's first reading on the other one, so that's fine. Okay, in so much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of po- its policies, rules, and regulations, manual in the committee, which is appointed, has been working towards the goal, the following is brought this time for second reading in compliance with board file, with the board file. Now therefore be it resolved with the Board of Date, ah, with the Board of Education of Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts the following and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policies, rules, and regulations. BFF, Board Member's Ethics, BCDA, also CBAB, Superintendent's Code of Ethics, BCCAA, Treasurer's Code of Ethics, CBAB, also BCDA, Superintendent's Code of Ethics, BCBAC, Business Manager Code of Ethics, CBDA, Internal Audit Code of Ethics, GBC, Staff Ethics, GBCAB, Administrator's Code of Ethics. I move that we adopt these policies.
Second.
It moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, Dr. Goodwin.
All right. In so much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations, manual in the committee, which was appointed, has been working towards that goal, the following are brought at this time for first reading in compliance with board file, BFC, policy adoption. Two, two of them are correct. One is incorrect.
No, they're not.
Okay, so you want to just wait till next week?
Please.
All right, never mind. Scratch that. I have no comments, because we are moving. Continue on. Let's go. I'm gonna even start packing up my stuff.
Mr. Lacy?
I have their comments. I'm looking forward to our finance committee.
All right. Dr. Bailey?
Uh, no comment.
All right. Mr. Walker?
Uh, none.
All right. Ms. Reinhardt?
Um, yeah, one quick update. I had the opportunity to attend the OSBA, OASBO, and BASSA Winter Finance Workshop yesterday. Um, it was a great, um, how many hours between eight-thirty and three, of brushing up my school funding and legislative, um, knowledge in regards to, um, the school funding formula. Um, if any of you are aware of Dr. Howard Fleeter, Howard Fleeter, who's an expert in school funding, um, at the beginning of his presentation, he said that he had fifty slides, and everybody in the room laughed because we knew that he wasn't joking, and that was the, that's what we love about him, because he has fifty slides full of very wonky information. Um, I got lots of updates about, um, the updated, uh, tax valuations that Ohio is grappling with in regards to the, to the increased property tax, um, uh, valuations that is happening across the state. Um, I have a lot of updates about the lame duck, um, legislative sessions that are happening right now. Um, if you're not aware, it is lame duck season, so a lot of bills are going through. Um, I'm not going to give you a full update, because I'm sure that a lot of this has changed in the last twenty-four hours, and it will change again. So I will give the district an update next week. Um, if you are curious about looking at some of the most, um, watched bills in regards to education in the State House right now, I would encourage you to look at House Bill Eight, which is the vehicle for a lot of the more controversial bills to be stuffed into as an amendment. Um, and then watch House Bill Four-oh-seven, which is about voucher transparency, and I will bring a full update next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wick?
Um, looking forward to all the holiday programs next week, so I hope all of our families come out and attend. These are important events for our kids and families, and encourage all the board members to get out there, too. Uh, it's testing, finishing up testing week, so thanks to our teachers and staff. These are busy times. Uh, Christmas is one of the busiest times of the year, honestly, with all of the testing and end of year and the excitement. So certainly appreciate all the work you continue to do to, uh, drive us to New Year. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer?
I have nothing today.
Ms. Hollis, you got anything? Okay. Dr. Lawrence?
I do briefly. I want to thank the academic team. It's always good to see you. And I want to thank the operations team. It's good to see you in the house tonight. Uh, Ms. Hollis, you did a wonderful job. Uh, I want to say hello to Judith Spurlock. Uh, we are missing one member of the team, and you are so valuable and so important, and we miss you so much. So get well soon. Can't wait for you to get back. Dr. Jones, who, and I'm being serious now, I've known him for two decades. He does not ever miss work, ever. So you get well. I'm concerned, because you're never sick. And, um, finally, thanks to Amber Whip- not finally, Amber Whitmire, thanks to the breakfast for cabinet, which includes operations and the treasurer's office. And finally, um, a special thanks and a sad farewell for Dr. Sherri Gill, who will be leaving us, um, to become the new CEO of the House of Brett, and we appreciate you, admire, respect. Uh, Ms. Minor's already got us booked with a couple partnerships. Um, Dr. Gill already sent me the bill for the first fundraiser. Absolutely. I will make sure the folks up here contribute as well. So we are going to so miss you, and Dr. Gill said that, you know, this has been a great experience, and we appreciate you. And on her way out, uh, I should, well, we can't tell them yet. We'll wait till next week to tell them the, the, the third one. Yes, that's going to be, well, that's it. That's a, that's a great way to go at it.
Amen. Don't try to steal her thunder, man.
I, I am not. She's going to tell them next week.
Now you got people going to be asking her all week.
Uh, well.
Great dudes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Go Wolverines.
Michigan?
Yes, Michigan Wolverines.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Um, I want to say I appreciate seeing so many people out here. Um, I think that you guys knew that we were going to get out of here in less than an hour, and so y'all decided, you know, let's go see what's going down on the road today. Um, I just, I really do appreciate everything that you all do, everything that people do, uh, throughout the district. No job is more important than the other. Everybody needs each other to get it done. Um, I want to say I appreciate everyone who has been out to these events, putting on these events that are going on. Uh, like was said, please get out there. I want to, um, extend my sincere condolences to the family of Mr. Bozey Milliner. Um, he recently passed. He was a long, long, long time employee here in the district and coached football over at Meadowdale, uh, for multiple years. Multiple, multiple children came up through him, also was a Meadowdale alum. So his service is this week. Make sure that that information gets out, but I definitely want to send that out, uh, to his family. He was somebody that coached me over at Meadowdale, so he will definitely be missed. Um, and lastly, I just want everybody to realize we're headed into this holiday season. Like I said before, please check on everyone. Make sure that people are, are feeling loved on at this time, which means we got to love on each other first. Uh, lastly, oh, yeah, keep the main thing the main thing. And with that?
Motion to adjourn.
Our motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third. Oh, man, you know, my hat is stings all over. You know, you know. All right. Seeing no questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker. Y'all just getting up like we just been here.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Ms. Reiner. Yes.
All right.
Seven yeses.
Meeting adjourned.